July 7, 2015, meeting of the Edina City Council and the Edina Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Roll call, please, Ms. Mangan.
Member Brindle.
Here.
Member Staunton.
Here.
Member Stewart.
Here.
Member Swenson.
Here.
Mayor Hovland.
Here. We have in front of us this evening a form of meeting agenda that's been posted for residents. Is there anyone that wants to move to adopt the meeting agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to adopt the meeting agenda, as shown. Any further conversation on that issue? All those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda, as shown, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. And then we've got a consent agenda with about ten items on there. Is there anyone that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
I do.
All right.
I would like to remove four aye, please.
All right. With the exception of four aye, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve all the items on the consent agenda with the exception of four aye. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. And four aye, Member Brindle, that is dealing with a Human Rights and Relations Commission resignation.
Right, it's just, in my recollection, it's not customary for us to act on a resignation of a commissioner. So I just questioned why we would have this as an item. We have occasions where commissioners have need to resign a position. They submit an email or letter of resignation, and then when we get involved, it is to appoint someone to fill that seat. But I'm not aware that we've actually been involved in accepting a resignation. So that's why I question this one more than anything.
All right, Manager Neil, I think you could handle this matter for us.
Thank you, Your Honor, and members of council. Councilmember Brindle is correct. Our normal practice when we have a resignation is we handle it as an informational item, and that's the way we should have framed this particular item. The message that we were trying to convey through this item on your agenda tonight, not very artfully, I'll admit, is that we are out of people on the bench for the Human Rights and Relations Commission. And so the question is really, do you want us to begin a notification-selection process, or are you okay with leaving this particular seat vacant and then replacing it in the upcoming process around the turn of the year? Our recommendation as staff, the commission itself did not have a strong feelings either way. Our recommendation as staff is that there's sufficient members of the HRRC to complete their work plan, and that it's okay to leave it vacant unless you believe you'd like it to be filled.
Mayor.
Member Swenson.
I assume that was the reason it was on here, and because any time it's after June and we don't have someone, we usually leave it open because it's six months, so I would move this issue.
Thank you.
Second.
You want to follow the staff recommendation of leaving the seat open until our annual onboarding in March 2016?
Correct.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. Any further discussion on that matter? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. In the special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda this evening, we have nothing in that category, and we'll move right on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have two public hearing matters before us this evening, and one deals with the potential issuance of bonds by the city of Minneapolis on behalf of Fairview Health Services. We have to approve that, and... Manager Neil, who's going to?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll introduce Brad, Nate. I want to introduce Nate, and Nate will have to tell you his own last name, but he is a lawyer from Dorsey &amp; Whitney. We are looking tonight at a bond issue, yeah, from that podium.
From that podium?
We're looking at approval of a bond issue that Fairview Health Systems is doing with the city of Minneapolis, and part of the proceeds of this bond sale have been used in our community, and so therefore you get a chance to tell the potential bondholders how you feel about their financing. And with that, there really isn't much more of a staff presentation than that, so we'll turn it over to the applicant.
Not much of a lawyer presentation either. Minneapolis is issuing...
Give us your name and address, please.
Nate Canova, Dorsey &amp; Whitney, 50 South Sixth Street, Minneapolis.
Thank you, Mr. Canova.
Certainly. All right, so the city of Minneapolis is proposing to issue tax-exempt bonds on behalf of Fairview in the amount of approximately $135 million, so not to exceed amount, of $135 million. The reason we're here in your city asking for consent for this issuance is really just an IRS requirement. The IRS requires that any time facilities are financed in a city by another city, that the host city consent. So we published a notice in the newspaper. We're holding a public hearing this evening. Hopefully consent is given, and Minneapolis will proceed with the issuance of bonds. What it means to the city is really four refinancings in 1997, 2000, 2005, and 1989. The city actually had projects done in its territory and its boundaries with tax-exempt financing. So we're going to refinance all those previous bonds, and we're also issuing new money, approximately $30 million worth, to go towards Southdale's emergency department renovation. And the hospital here is here to answer questions about the renovation itself if you have questions, but that's the purpose of the refinancing and the new money financing, so...
All right, so I'm just going to ask you to affirm a few things for us, Mr. Canova. That was in a covering memo to the council, and that is Edina's consent is needed, as you pointed out, in order to issue the bonds. It's an IRS requirement.
Correct.
And the bonds are not being issued by the city of Edina. That's correct, is it not?
Correct.
And they will not become an obligation of the city of Edina.
That is correct.
Edina's bond attorney and financial advisors are aware of the proposed financing and have not raised any issues to the best of your knowledge, I take it?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
And I can affirm that is true as well.
All right, thank you. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Canova, or any of the representatives from Fairview Southdale? Or from the Fairview system? All right, I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. This is a public hearing. If anyone wishes to come forward and testify, feel free to come forward. You'll have three minutes. I would suggest using one of the side podiums, give us your name and address, and we'll be happy to take your testimony. Seeing no one coming forward and hearing no one expressing a desire to testify, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. Do we have a motion regarding this proposed resolution?
I will move Resolution Number 2015-67, approving the issuance of bonds by the city of Minneapolis on behalf of Fairview Health Services.
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second. And we just need a favorable majority vote, I believe, not a roll call. All those in favor of adopting the resolution approving the sale of bonds by the city of Minneapolis on behalf of Fairview Health Services, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck with all of this. Thank you. Director Teague, you have the next public hearing matter in front of us. It's a land use matter, involves a potential rezoning from R1 to R2, and a couple of lot variances on a piece of property over at 3923 49th Street. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the...
City Council, this is a rezoning, as mentioned, from R1 to R2, so it's a single-family residential zoning district to two-family, or a duplex zoning district. This site is located just north of the 50th and France area, just west of France. Here's France Avenue. This is the north parking ramp, and so there's a row of single-family homes and duplexes, and a multi-story apartment building that's located next to the subject site. The site exists today with a two-story, single-family home with a detached garage in the rear, with quite a long driveway to the back. It's a quick look at the existing home. The applicant's proposing to tear that home down and build a duplex on the site. The map on the screen here is the zoning in the area. The area hatched in red is the commercial 50th and France area. This is the multi-story apartment building. The black cross-hatched area, those signify duplexes located on 49th Street, and the white properties are single-family homes, which includes the subject property. So this is a look at the building that's being proposed. Most of the council recalls last year, a similar request was before the city council for a rezoning on the site. The structure that you see was quite a bit larger last time around. There were a number of, well, they were asking for a building coverage variance. They were proposing 32 percent. This project before the council, there's no variances that are requested for the house itself. They've reduced the size, the footprint of the home. All the required setbacks are met. Those were the variances that caused some issues with the council the last time around. So the request before the council is only the rezoning, and for the existing lot size. Just to quickly show the site plan, you see the building footprint. Side yard setbacks, 13 and 12 feet. The previous request included a five-foot setback on the east lot line. There's a single drive into the duplex with a ponding area in the front. The grading and drainage would all be reviewed as part of a building permit that would come through should this project be approved. So the primary issue for the council is the rezoning from R1 to R2 reasonable for the site, including those variances. Staff and the planning commission believe they are reasonable and are recommending We believe that the proposal does fit the neighborhood. Again, the cross-hatched area indicates all of the duplexes that are located along 49th Street. There's only a very few single-family homes remaining. The adjacent property is a multi-story apartment building. In regard to the lot sizes, a minimum lot size is 15,000 square feet. There's not any of the duplex lots that meet that 15,000 square foot requirement on 49th Street. This lot is a little bit smaller than some of the others, as indicated here, but as the applicant has demonstrated, they can still locate a duplex on the site to meet all of our minimum standards. So we believe that it does, again, fit that character of that neighborhood. So with that, since the land uses are consistent, it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, staff and the planning commission are recommending approval, subject to the findings and conditions that are outlined in the resolution. With that, I can stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions for Director Teague? Member Brindle.
Carrie, on the picture you just had up, so go to the next one. Yeah, that one. At the top of the driveway, there's the mesh depicted. I can't figure out what that is. What is that?
That's the temporary driveway during construction, so that would be removed as part, it would be your standard bituminous driveway that would be connected to the street when it's all done.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Director Teague at this point in time?
Not right now.
All right, stand by. Thank you. The applicant is here this evening, and council, and I should let you come forward, Mr. Mortenson?
No.
Anyone take about 10 minutes, or maybe not even that long, five minutes? Tell us what you're proposing here.
No.
Absolutely.
Make sure you give us your full name and address.
Mathias Mortenson, 2429 Sheridan Avenue. I want to say thank you for patience with dealing, helping me work through this process. I was here over a year ago. Some of you may remember. Some of you haven't seen this project before. And as Carrie pointed out, one of the concerns originally was the size of the project, and we worked really hard to heartfully reduce the size of the project. Not just the footprint, though, we also reduced the height. We also reduced the impermeable surface. So we've done a lot of things that I think have been really positive, and we've done it while managing to stay true to some of the really important aspects. So I did want to just point out that there are things that have also stayed the same. We've always had two main goals with this project. One is to provide for age and place living, so that, so that single-floor living for, you know, changing demographics, that allows occupants to exist on one floor. All the necessities and amenities are on one floor. There's a residential elevator that accesses parking, the below-grade parking, and the first and second floors, and then we're hewing to all the, although it's not required, hewing to all the accessibility codes. So that's one thing that's stayed the same. And the others, we're still very much committed to sustainability, so we are still planning for solar panels on the roof. We still have rain gardens to accommodate the majority of the stormwater runoff, as well as negative drainage relating to the below-grade parking. We've worked really hard to reduce impermeable surface as much as possible, and we're also, we're going to be using something called advanced framing, which really reduces the amount of material you have to use to build the project. So those two things are still the same, and all the other changes, I think, have been really positive, and hopefully meet, hopefully you agree. So with that, I'll just take any questions.
And I think you, since we saw you last, you hired a professional engineer who helped you with the grading and the...
That's right.
...stormwater management and erosion control. You might want to comment briefly on that as well.
And that's what you saw, Councilperson Brindle, that was the plan developed by the civil engineer. That was the stormwater prevention and pollution plan. So civil engineer, we had a soils report done, and we had a civil engineer and a landscape architect work together to develop a plan for the land that was both very practical and beautiful, and complemented the building. And that's, you know, where we're at right now, although it may, all that material may not be in front of you, but we do feel that with the civil engineer, we have addressed all the concerns. And we've also been conversing with the city engineer to address any concerns that he had, and I believe that he is, he's on board with the plan.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Mortenson at this point in time? All right, stand by, Mr. Mortenson, and we'll open this matter up for public testimony. I'm going to open this up for a public hearing. If anyone wishes to come and comment or inquire regarding this potential project, please feel free to come forward, give us your name and address, and best to use one of the side podiums, I think, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jim Stromberg. I live at 3930 West 49th Street. I'm kind of kitty-corner across the street from this project. Since moving to Edina a couple of years ago into this new house that I'm living in, a new dwelling is also in the process of being marketed, having been built this last year next door to me, just to the west. Mr. Mortenson's here to propose to you a building plan for the area across and kitty-corner from me that I think is very complimentary to the neighborhood. I know it's kind of unusual for maybe somebody to come and stand before you and lobby for a multifamily house instead of a single-family house, but in this case, I think, having gone through this last year that he's gone through with the rejection that he had in his first plan, he's addressed the concerns of the council. He's gone to the planning commission, and the planning commission has given that stamp of approval as well. And I think that this addition that he's proposing would be very complimentary to the neighborhood. I urge you to strongly consider that, and if you have any concerns about the building itself, please make sure that you take care of that by looking at the building application process when it comes time for that, if you give your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stromberg. Anyone else?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those say nay. Carried. We've got two actions required here, potential actions required. One is a resolution supporting the R1 to R2 change, plus the variances, and then there's an actual ordinance change on the zoning from R1 to R2. Director Teague or Mr. Knutson, do you want those handled in a single motion? They both require the same kind of vote. Can we handle them in one motion?
Yes.
All right, so this requires a roll call vote, majority vote. Would someone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, to adopt Resolution 2015-68, and it's corollary, the ordinance number 2015-09, which would approve the change in the zoning from R1 to R2. Any further discussion or comment from council members?
I just want to say thank you to Mathias for your patience and listening to the comments from planning commission, and from the council, and from the city engineer. We've given you a lot to think about. You've given us a lot to think about, but thank you for your patience. What you've ended up with is really nice.
Member Swenson.
I raised my hand to say the same thing, so Mary managed to do it for me. Thank you.
Anyone else? Member Stewart, you looked like you were interested in commenting. Yeah, thank you, I think it was well said. Member Staunton.
I'd just add, I actually have been with this since the very first iteration back at the planning commission, and I echo the previous comments, but the other thing that I would point out, and I was supportive of this even back when it had variances, I think there's, the map that was in Carrie's presentation, as well as one of the ones in the staff report, this is, it's, the R2 is appropriate for this area. It's a really nice transition from the commercial area into single-family residential, and I like what you've done to fit into that, but I think overall, the rezoning really makes a lot of sense on this street, and so I'm glad that we're getting yet another piece taken care of.
I concur with that as well. Great transitional piece of property next to another duplex, next to an apartment building behind the city parking ramp. I think it's, you've done a wonderful job. So, all right, roll call, please.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Member Stewart.
Aye.
Member Swenson.
Aye.
Member Brindle.
Aye.
Mayor Hovland.
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you to Mr. Gendrich for your good guidance here for your client. Appreciate that as well. Also does work as the counsel for Norway. Nice to have him in the audience this evening, just freshly back, I think, from a couple weeks in Norway. All right, next portion of the agenda deals with community comment. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening? Seeing no one coming forward, we'll move on to reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter there Director Teague has, which is potential adoption of an affordable housing policy by the council. Director Teague.
Thank you, Mayor.
And you've got a couple of members of the Edina Housing Foundation here as well, and maybe you should recognize them this evening as part of your presentation.
We do. We have Jack Rice and Doug Mayo from the foundation, and Joyce Repia is also here, who's the staff liaison to the commission as well.
Thank you, gentlemen, for coming this evening.
So before you is a policy that's recommended by the Edina Housing Foundation. It's the result of the work session that we had with the foundation back on June the 2nd. The policy is attached in your packet. The foundation has made a couple of relatively minor changes since it was discussed at the work session, recognizing the difficulty in providing affordable housing on smaller projects. Policy number one, they've added the over 20 units provision, so the policy statement would read, "The city council will require at least 20 percent of the total units in a new multifamily housing development. Over 20 units requiring a rezoning or variances, to be sold or rented at an affordable price," as defined later on in the policy. The other change is on policy number three, where they're suggesting a higher density to the maximum range in the comprehensive plan, or some type of a density bonus provided for a developer that does include 20 percent of the units within the project as affordable. We have taken out the waiver of fees, as was recommended by the city council. I'll also mention that Councilmember Brindle has suggested a list of issues that were included on page three, so we add that for your consideration, kind of a housing issues in Edina statements. So with that, we would recommend that you adopt the attached policy in your packet as recommended by the Edina Housing Foundation, and we can all stand for questions.
Member Brindle, I thank you for putting these items together on the affordable housing issues list, and maybe you'd care to comment, would you?
Well, I do. I mean, I'm fully in favor of this. I'm excited to have a tool that will help us as a council to say, this is what we're looking for, and to have developers see how they can build high-density housing, medium-density housing, in a manner that satisfies what we see as our goal for housing for all in our city. And I felt like, inasmuch as we have a policy that has measures on how to accomplish that, I felt like we needed to have some statement in here of why this is important to us, and what kinds of issues we are addressing with this policy. So that's really why I put it together.
All right, thank you. Other council member comments?
I have questions.
Member Swenson.
That, the TIF rule that we got that allows us to use TIF for down to 20 percent affordable, didn't that have a sunset date on it?
It does.
So can we just leave that in there? Because we didn't write that it is, we can only use that till a certain time. We might consider it, but we might not legally be allowed to use it if it just goes past that time. So I think we need to...
Can I suggest that it may not be just the housing TIF that we might use in a project. We might use some other kind of TIF, if affordable housing is part of it.
Okay, well, but does the rule that we can use it down to 20 percent and not for 40 percent only include that one housing TIF we have?
There are a couple different kinds or ways to use tax increment in a housing project. This is one of them. What I think, what you're thinking of is the special legislation that we had from the state legislature. That has, it has a different set of thresholds and use restrictions, and that, I believe we have to have our, I believe we have to have our agreement in place by the end of 2017. I think that's the year.
Okay, and then for our other kind of TIF, we can use it at 20 percent? Because I thought the rule for it was 40.
That I'm not as, that I'm not as sure about.
Isn't that why we asked for that special legislation? Because the 40 rule was too tough for us to do? So I don't know...
So we need to get some clarification, we'll get some clarification on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure about all that. And then on the for the Edina Housing Foundation, is that something that we can include in our policy, or is that something that should normally be included in their policy?
Do you see this, and then I'll ask Mr. Teague as well, is this the city saying that's our expectation of the Housing Foundation, or is that their offer to us to be part of the deal?
Yeah, that is their offer to us, as this being the document that when I'm sitting down with developers that are coming in, considering a project in the city, I would present this policy, and that is the foundation's...
And so normally, we would include an offer of another entity's policy in something that we give to our builders?
Well, it has the flexibility. It's just stating that the foundation would consider financial assistance. It's not guaranteeing or promising.
No, I get that. I just didn't know if this was where it should be, since we don't make the decision about what they do. They make the decision about what they do. And then the only other thing is, I know I was, we were all asked to respond to this policy, and I asked a question, has any other city ever done something similar to what I would call carbon credit, where if there was another building, maybe on the same block that was done, let's just pretend it's the old library out by Southdale, and one building is going to be all affordable and the other building isn't? Can one building then hold the affordability for the building that isn't? So...
Certainly, I think...
That isn't, we didn't write that in here, though, so do we have that kind of flexibility? Because I don't see that kind of flexibility written into this.
Yeah, I think we would. It would be part of an overall development.
Right. If it's considered...
But you understand...
If it's considered one development... But if it's considered one development...
Yeah, but you, well, but it might be two different builders. They are subdividing the parcels of land. Would you then be able to accept the fact that one parcel would cover the affordable units for the other one because they were all going to be affordable? Now, I would. I'm just asking.
Well, it's, that's not something that, let's, the hypothetical would be that you've got more than one building on that piece of, on that parcel. Now, we're not telling the builders that they can do this. They're coming to us and asking to do this.
Right. But would we accept that?
Well, I would think so.
I would, but I'm just, I thought we should at least have a discussion about it ahead of time, because it could happen.
So, so maybe a hypothetical would be 71 France, for example. If we did have an agreement with them to have some kind of an affordable, number of affordable units in that overall three-building development, you, I think your concern is, could, what if they came to us and said, we want to put all those affordable units in building C, that's the last one we're going to build, are, is the city okay with that? And as part of, if, if we were doing a PUD, or if they were asking for some other consideration, you could certainly make that kind of, of agreement with them as, as part of the incentive or the...
But that's just one builder. I was wondering if we could potentially end up having two, two separate companies come to us and, and say, hey, you know, they're going to do all market rate, and we're going to use all, do all senior affordable...
Tradable credits.
Can we, yes, tradable credits, because it's what I said, carbon credits, but is that what carbon credits are kind of like? So, I don't know. I just thought we...
I think, I think there are some conceptual things that we can talk about separately from this that aren't dependent on the letter of this. But as we, we want affordable housing to be everywhere in our city and not just one place, whether we want one building to be strictly affordable versus another strictly not affordable, I, you know, I, that's, that's something to talk about when the time comes.
If Beacon builds 39 units of affordability in one place, and then next door, there's a marketplace that builds 198 units, you know, of non-affordable, would we consider Beacon satisfying in that proximity, what we want in affordable housing?
Yeah, point taken. Okay.
Well, and we want a nice mix of affordable housing. You want some to be in, in high-density housing units, but you also want some single-family homes to be affordable. Member Staunton had an interesting concept. He floated, and I don't want to steal your thunder, Kevin, so why don't you go ahead and describe that?
Well, I guess I'd just take it a step further. Why don't we just, why don't we outline that we'd consider payment into some kind of fund in lieu of that? I mean, one of my concerns is, you know, this will do a nice job with the rental slash multifamily affordable housing, but what about the single-family? And over time...
Or condos get built again?
Right, or if condos, but over time, we may be able, we may want to balance the mix in single-family neighborhoods versus higher-density multifamily, and why not just leave the door open to, if, if it doesn't make sense for that project to actually have the affordable units on that site, to permit a payment in lieu of that, that would then go into a fund that the Housing Foundation or the city or someone can use to supplement and, and basically create affordable housing in other places in the city.
We talked about that with, on our project.
We did, and I, and we asked our, our city attorney, and he said that if we are negotiating an overall PUD with the, with the developer, that that is a condition that could be on the table. Is that, is that a fair way to describe it, Roger?
Very fair. If it's a planned unit development, then we start from scratch and write the ordinance, and we put in the requirements that we think are appropriate.
So it could work much like a park dedication fee, and we could have a, an affordable housing fund.
Right, we don't have statutory authority to do that absent the rezoning or the variance, but if it's a condition of approving.
There are cities that have affordable housing fees that are assessed to developments that are not affordable, that are market rate, and...
In Minnesota?
No. Not in Minnesota. Seattle is one of them.
I like that concept, though, because I do agree that we're not just looking for affordability in apartments. We're looking for affordability all over our city.
We are.
There are a lot of places that apartments aren't built, that we could use some additional funds to do single-family homes. So I would like that approach. Do we have to add that as a...
Yeah, I think we should, just at least acknowledging.
Yeah, and, so I think we're ahead of, I don't feel there's any urgency to adopting this tonight, and I'd like to have Member Swenton's, Member Swenson's idea of the sunset on the TIF issue get addressed properly, so that we have that appropriate language in here before we adopt the policy, and I'd like to incorporate this other concept. So I, I would suggest we...
Lay it over for a couple of weeks.
Lay it over for, for those revisions, and then, and then address it.
So could I ask you a couple more questions before we go there?
Sure.
Just, and maybe this is for Director Teague. So just, so I'm clear, having this policy, there's nothing about this policy that is going to compel us to approve a rezoning. Just because somebody comes to us and says, we'll give you 20% affordable housing, doesn't mean you have to rezone.
Right.
And it doesn't mean you have to grant a variance, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Because I think there's been some discussion that I've heard out there of folks thinking that this is the other way around, that somehow this policy is us committing to granting rezonings or committing to granting variances in advance. I see it as just the opposite, that what we're doing is sending some signals along the lines of the principles that we talked about on the France Avenue in Southdale of give to get. We're starting to articulate some of what needs to be given to get, and affordable housing might be one of those things. And to me, the TIF, and I'll be curious to hear more from staff on this, but, you know, there's a variety of different ways and different purposes that are eligible expenses for TIF financing, and those might work into a project that includes affordable housing, even if those TIF finance arrangements aren't being used specifically for the affordable housing. It might be a stormwater management or other kind of infrastructure that we're, when we look at the whole package together, and it includes this 20% or more of affordable housing, that that's something we might be willing to participate in. And again, it's going to, it's going to depend on all kinds of things. To me, this policy leaves the discretion with us, but we're signaling to the development community, these are the things we're going to be expecting if you're going to come asking for rezoning or variances.
So do you want...
Other comments?
Two weeks or a month?
I would tell you that I, I think we should, I think we should get you some more definitive answers on a couple of these details. I would not recommend letting it hang out there too long. One of the things that we have seen in Edina, when we start discussing these kind of things, when it was increasing the cost demolition permits, when it was, you're going to be required to put in residential fire sprinkler systems over houses of X, is that we get a flood of applications trying to beat the deadline.
You mean the 35 demo permits we got in December when we upped the demolition...
When they were 250 bucks.
So let's address it in two weeks.
So we'll do our very best to address this in two weeks, because you never know what's, we, we, sometimes we know what's coming in the door, sometimes we don't know what's coming in the door.
The other thing I would suggest is different about this situation is, again, these are rezonings or variances where they are going to need our cooperation. We certainly have signaled where we're headed with this, and so whether the policy is finalized and formalized, if somebody comes in before it gets there, I still would intend to be asking for these kinds of things.
You don't need a motion, then, for...
We got, we know what you want.
All right, so I think with respect to the issue that Member Swenson raised, take a look at the language of Arabic four, which deals with the Edina Housing Foundation considering providing financial assistance. I think two should mirror that. The city would consider various forms of allowable public financing for new projects, you know, that it works in tandem with that language in four, so that two and four work together.
Right, and I think those concepts...
It's more generic, it's not just limited to TIF, it's more generic about public financing.
Well, TIF is, though, the one tool we actually currently haven't have used. Do we have other tools that I'm missing?
Well, there could be. I mean, we could create some, we could create this fund.
Fund, okay.
But I think the concepts of the tradable credits and the, and the substituting a cash payment into the fund, into the housing fund, instead of building something specifically for affordable housing, all of those, I think, could be suitable substitutes for...
Okay.
The other thing, Member Brindle, would you take a look at in the interim here that number five on your list, when affordable, I'm thinking the language needs to be modified a little bit, when affordable units are available in high-density housing, we don't define high-density housing, transit options for all modes, I think you just meant transit options, will need to be upgraded. Another use for TIF funding, well, that gets beyond our jurisdiction, will need to be upgraded. You know, I mean, that's a council decision as to whether or not they want to provide us with more transit options, unless we wanted to create our own transit options under our own authority. So I'm just thinking about how, how would we word that to embody the idea that...
I guess what I'm saying there is access, and having increased transit available to that area where more people are. So, I mean, that's where I was going with it. I mean, whether I went there and got there clearly or not, I'm willing to...
But what I hear you say is, the bus service isn't something that we always control its ability to get to a place it's never been before. I think that was...
And that's right. Member Brindle's right about that, that, I mean, you, unless you have a sufficient amount of density, there's no transit.
Right.
Yeah, right. That's what I was getting at.
Yeah, no, an issue, you're right.
So are we, I mean, I understood the, the affordable housing issues that Member Brindle had drafted were kind of observations about that, are we making those part of the formal policy? Is that the intent here?
That was her intention, is to kind of append them to the policy, that they're not referenced in the body of it, so I guess we should have that discussion right now, too, whether we think it's appropriate to append them and reference them.
I guess I didn't know what you, I assumed it was kind of for our discussion. I didn't understand it to be part of the policy.
I did, too.
Maybe I misunderstood.
Well, I guess I, when looking at the affordable housing policy, I felt like it was important to say what we were addressing here and why.
I, I thought of them, when, when I received them from you, of them being almost whereas statements in a resolution, recitation of...
That's kind of how we talked about it.
Yep.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so...
I'm okay with that, as long as we don't commit ourselves to providing transportation that would be difficult for us to provide.
So why don't you take a cut at that, too? Converting these affordable housing issues that Member Brindle's raised into recitals.
Will do.
Do you want a motion to lay that over for two weeks? You don't need one, okay?
We know what you want.
Good. All right, Deb Megan has the next matter, which is amending the time of sale of wine or intoxicating liquor on Sunday to certain licensees.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. During 2015 session, the legislature changed the time that licensees may begin serving intoxicating liquor and wine on Sundays, and we've had a few requests from some of our licensees to bring our Edina code into compliance with statute so that they may take advantage of that. We know we're going to do a more comprehensive look at our ordinance later this year, but this is a simple fix to allow them to take advantage of some of those summer brunch hours where they have...
All right, good. Any other further questions for...
Second.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to adopt a resolution, 2015-69.
2015-10.
2015-10.
I went, I jumped ahead of myself here. Twenty-five, 2015-10, which allows Sunday sales starting at 8:00 AM instead of 10:00 AM, based on state law change.
I would ask that you include waiver of second reading with that motion.
That would be included in my motion, is my second.
And second accepts it.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to handle this matter on a waiver of second reading methodology as well. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Member Staunton.
Aye.
Member Stewart?
Aye.
Member Swenson?
Aye.
Member Brindle?
Aye.
Your husband.
Aye. And now, resolution 2015-69, accepting donations and grants. Is there a motion with respect to this resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Another state law requirement that we approved by four-fifth vote, these gifts to the city. We've got a motion, a second, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those say nay. Carrie, this reporting period for the Edina Arts Center, there are several in-kind contributions. And then Edina Park and Rec, Edina Give and Go, a nice $378 scholarship funding for playground programs, and Edina Public Works, some in-kind contributions of some daylilies as well from the, one of the daylily societies in Minnesota here.
You didn't want to attempt that word.
Yeah. Hemerocallis.
Hemerocallis.
All right. Correspondence petitions, anything other than what was on the dais this evening? No, nothing? We can move on to an aviation noise update. Member Swenson or Madjo Neil, anything in the reporting period?
We have elections by phone tomorrow, the at-large knock for the position of chair and second chair, second chair being what I have had but never made it to the meeting since the chair is always there, so we'll see what happens tomorrow afternoon, but I will put myself forward and see if I can get us as the at-large chair, so...
Good, great, terrific.
We've gotten a lot of calls, though, and letters. Another one, I think, summer, it's hot, remember, the takeoffs are lower in hot air, especially humid air, people's windows are open. You know, the trouble is, you know, if they call for the first two weeks of, or the last two weeks of June, that report doesn't come out until the third week of July on the NAC website. So I've been handing out website instructions and calling instructions. The last woman I talked to in Halifax doesn't get on the computer, but she does have the phone number, but now I have her getting ahold of Franken and Klobuchar, because funding for the FAA is up right now, and it will, and it will get passed by our federal representative shortly. I, you know, yeah, I think there's some changes. I think we're, if I look at the past, I think they're kind of culling them in a little bit more, but that's just my personal opinion, I, not an engineer.
And the data is not available yet for sort of the...
It is hot.
Part of summer.
It isn't, which is really hard. The one cool thing you can do, though, if you're a computer geek, and I'm not a computer geek, so the fact that I could do this is pretty impressive, but you can, there's a 10 or 15-minute delay, but you can literally see what plane, how big, whose plane it was, Delta's MD80 or whatever it was, was the one that flew over your house at 10:10 in the morning, and you couldn't hear the Today Show, or whatever it was that really annoyed you. You can literally watch and see what plane it was, you just have to be on delay for 10 minutes, but it's kind of cool.
Madjo Neil, anything on aviation update?
Uh, no, nothing, nothing beyond, I think what I've told you before was that at our second, I believe it's our first, maybe Clerk Megan can remind me, it's either at our first meeting in August or our second meeting in August, we have, we have a representative from the MAC who's going to be here to talk about the long-term aviation capital improvement plans at the airport. You may have seen, they just did a similar presentation for the Bloomington City Council, there was some media report about that. You're going to get that same presentation in August.
And then this fall, we get Dana, who's the head of the NAC, coming, and I've announced the date once, now I don't have it, and so we were going to find that, so we will have that in August to put on our website.
I can also report that at the U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting, I'm on the standing transportation committee meeting, and we had a presentation, it was brief, but by Phoenix, and how they really got caught blindsided by the implementation of RNAV on an outlawed basis in Phoenix, no opportunity to participate in any kind of conversation. All of a sudden, one day, the whole world changed for everybody in central historic Phoenix, and now it's just a pipeline over central Phoenix. So they were advising folks as to what had happened to them, and I talked a little bit about this, the experience we're having in Minneapolis, which is far different.
And that could have been us.
Could have been us, if we hadn't stood up in November of 13, I think it was.
Yeah, October 27th, Airport 101 with Dana Nelson. I found the email just now. So could we, Jennifer, verify, we were going to look to make sure that we, this room was open for it. Do you remember that conversation, Scott?
Yeah.
And then can we put that on our airport noise and announce that she will be here, and she will make a presentation, but she will also be taking questions.
Yes.
October 27th?
October 27th, she calls it Airport Noise 101, and Dana Nelson is the manager of the noise environment and planning for MAC. And she is a very good speaker.
All right, Mayor and Council comments. Member Staunton.
Just one thing to report, I had a chance to attend the Sustainable Land Use Coalition Conference on Stormwater. Director Teague was there as well. It was maybe a week and a half ago or so, and it was a fascinating discussion led by an engineer from WSB as well as the city manager from the city of Hugo. And it centered, a lot of it centered on the troubles that White Bear Lake is having with reduced lake levels and questions about why that is, and are we drawing down too much water from aquifers that are then preventing the lake from getting fed. But it was a, it was an eye-opener about how much the entire Twin Cities metropolitan area is wrestling with water. And we're not the only ones, obviously, people have been reading the news and hearing in the news what California is doing and others. And it's just going to be a huge issue and it's going to keep getting bigger. A large part of our work session this evening, actually just the whole work session, seemed to be related in one way or another to water and utilities and how we're going to manage water. And the big takeaway for me was that we spend a lot of the treated water or groundwater or freshwater, potable water, whatever you want to call it, irrigating our lawns. And it strikes me that that doesn't make a lot of sense, and we should be, as local government, we should be looking for ways to change that paradigm. Because I, my observation was that the regulations will continue to change, and if we don't do something to lead the way for ourselves, other people will impose that on us, whether it be the state or the federal government or other entities. And so I think we have a real opportunity to think about that. We talked in our work session about one particular area that is dealing with that in the city and how that might be an opportunity for us to be creative about bringing those kinds of solutions. But I intend for that to be something that I really want to have us stay focused on and do our best to keep being on the cutting edge on stormwater. So I appreciate the city sponsoring my attendance of this conference. It was, it was a real eye-opener, and I look forward to continuing to keep up with that and keep the city out in front of that issue.
Member Swenson.
I've got nothing.
Member Brindle.
Oh, I always have a few things.
That's okay, you can fill in for me, I left you time.
All right. I attended a meeting recently, one that Mayor Hovland was also invited to and had to attend to, other business. It's, it's a discussion that is just beginning in our community. It's a discussion that's been going on in La Crosse, Wisconsin for a long time, and that has to do with helping residents and encouraging residents to take advanced care planning seriously and think about, think about and talk about choices for future healthcare decisions, encourage every adult to have a healthcare directive. Writing down your wishes is helpful if you have people in your life who you have conversation with who can carry out your choices for you when and if that time comes. But this committee is forming in our community to look at our others, other communities, specifically La Crosse at this point, has embraced this idea. The whole idea began at Gunderson Medical Center at La Crosse. And so we're looking to their experience and leadership. In La Crosse, 90% of the people in palliative care and hospice care and oncology care at the hospital there are, they have a healthcare directive. So 90% of them have their wishes already, already set out, and their personal care representative is available, whether it's a relative or a friend or a neighbor, is, is there to help carry out those, those objectives. So that conversation is just beginning. For information about this, you can search on honoring choices or respecting choices, and you'll find information about advanced care planning, and that's really where this discussion is, is centered. So it's a, it's a, like I said, it's a discussion that's just starting here. So more to come on that. I met with a couple of neighborhood associations, talking about a variety of things, from street reconstruction to organized hauling, to sidewalks, to how wide the streets ought to be when they're reconstructed, to please make our streets living streets. So people are definitely, those who are going to have their streets reconstructed in the next year or so, are definitely tuned in to the new designs of living streets, they're excited about them. And they, as residents, want to be more involved in the design process than maybe, maybe residents have been in, in the past. So they're asking for a more open conversation while the drawing is taking place. So it's kind of fun to hear residents want to be involved and take ownership of their street. So the Fourth of July Parade was last Saturday. Once again, a huge debt of gratitude to the committee. John Swan was chair, and he had a committee, I'm not even going to name the rest because I'll forget people. But tremendous job, well done. The parade was terrific, lots of fun. Having worked on the parade for many years, I always think the parade is a success when it starts and it ends, and it kept moving all the way. But this one, the first unit went by me a little after 10 o'clock, and the last unit went by me at 11:10. And that is fabulous, when you can have a one-hour parade on the morning of the Fourth of July, and you've got 87 units of, you know, there's a thousand, there's a thousand people in the parade minimum. So then you've got 15,000, 20,000 people spectating. And the spectators, it was solid from beginning to end, there wasn't a thin area along the route, it was just great. So thanks to everybody. The Fourth of July doesn't come off with a lot, without a lot of volunteers, including the police officers, the reserve officers who keep everybody safe, and the cars all going in one direction, coming out of the park at night. So, but it's, it's a fabulous day, it's my favorite day of the year.
And the Boy Scouts.
If you can't tell, oh, the Boy Scouts. They clean up the parade route after the parade. And that is, if, if you celebrate the Fourth of July and the parade, you really ought to celebrate what the Boy Scouts do to then make it that, that area that, put it back the way it was. And so I don't know if it was a number of troops, 123, 68, 63, and 48 are the three that I can think of that have done this from year to year. And I know 48 was in the parade because I saw Mike Seeger there, but, but they were probably all doing this together, so a huge, a huge thank you. And finally, as happens every year, we wouldn't have fireworks if we didn't have Fairview Southdale Hospital. They are, they fund the fireworks, they make that donation possible. So it's a 30-minute fireworks show, and it's beautiful, and, and it's something they very much enjoy doing and look forward to providing to the community. So a huge debt of gratitude, again, to the, to the hospital and particularly Brad Beard for making that possible.
Thank you. Member Stewart. Parade participant for the first time, and had a ball.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
The, on June 30th, Member Brindle, Mayor Hovland, and I attended the Aurora on France groundbreaking, and I, I want to digress just for a minute because we were talking about air traffic noise. During, there were several short speeches at the beginning, and during those short speeches, the airplanes that went over and caused sort of a stoppage of communication were regular. And, and none of those airplane occasions was one that would break anybody's eardrums, but each of them collectively, one after the other, was an annoyance and a detriment to the occasion. So I, one of the things I always want to emphasize with the FAA and the other people involved in these decisions on air traffic is it's, it's sometimes not the absolute volume of any one event, it's the frequency that I think can be as bad as, as anything. So that certainly was brought home on that occasion. But we are very excited about Aurora on France, the building is going to be beautiful, the partnership to put it together has done just great work, and, and so we're grateful to all those people. Also, on the Fourth of July, the other group, Member Brindle didn't mention that we should thank, is the Sousa Band, just a great resource, and Member Brindle's part of that. And for the fireworks at Roslin Park, again, thanks to Fairview Southdale for the fireworks, but I think the occasion is really so much greater because of the Sousa Band, so thank you guys for that. There is a upcoming events, there's a grand opening for Gordmans at Southdale on July 15th, and I get to pinch-hit in the monthly walk with the mayor. I'll be pinch-hitting for Mayor Hovland on July 18th. We'll be starting from the Caribou at Byerly's on France Avenue, so come out for that. And, and the next day, on the 19th, the Sousa Band is playing at Centennial Lakes.
We are? Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Senator.
And you didn't, you didn't comment further on your parade experience, but I thought you really enjoyed, and you had quite a ride there, that old 427 Cobra.
It was, yeah, it was a gorgeous vehicle. Roland Palet is the car owner, really nice gentleman and Edina resident, and it was nice enough to let us use his car for the parade. But it's, it's odd to drive down a street and have everybody looking at you. I haven't had that experience before, so...
Oh, I can help you with that.
At the car.
All right. We've got some of our residents in the audience, and you will not be forgotten this evening. The city manager is going to bring up the topic of what's next and how to deal with this issue that we talked about in Community Comment when you were here a few weeks ago, so bear with us a moment. The parade, I thought, was just terrific. I don't know how many people come to the parade, but it seems like more people come every year, there's six, eight, 10, 12, 15 people deep. As Member Brindle said, there isn't a gap anywhere, and there must be 15, 20,000 people that come to watch that hour-long parade. It's just a fantastic event, and it makes you feel like you're really part of a special town, which we all know we are, but it really brings it, brings it home for all of us. The Aurora on France groundbreaking on the 30th, that Member Stewart alluded to, Luigi Bernardi as a developer, we need to thank him and his family, as well as Volunteers of America, which will be running the transitional care. Ebenezer will be running the, the independent living and the assisted living part of it, and just a great, as Member Stewart said, just a great team of folks put together, all under the umbrella, especially the Ebenezer Group, under the Fairview umbrella, which is important to remember, and the hospital was there as well. And Edina's second Skyway coming there as the connector to that new building from the existing parking lot for the hospital. Back on the 25th, one of our longstanding residents passed away, Eric Ellingson, Ellingson and Ellingson Accountants. Nice to recognize that family, I think, all the contributions they've made to our community over the years. The firm will go on, the children of Eric that work there that are all CPAs and very capable will carry on the torchwell in his absence, but our condolences to his family. On the 29th of June, I attended the One Southdale Place grand opening. They're about 73% leased out now, and Stuart Nolan seems very pleased with that, so that was good to hear as well. The meeting that Member Brindle alluded to, that she was kind enough to cover for me, where they were talking about long-term care, we had a meeting of Southwest LRT, the Quarter Management Committee made an actual recommendation to the Met Council, and we have a project scope. It doesn't get us all the way to cutting $341 million out of the project to get it back to its, I'll call it original pricing or near original pricing at 1.6 billion, but we did manage to cut out $250 million out of the project scope and then try to extend it, I think, figure out a way to get it all the way to the Southwest Transit Hub, which I think, Manager Neal, you would probably concur, is a good idea because of the multiple uses that we can have from a transit standpoint by reaching to the Southwest Station. So I think, I think we'll figure out how to do it, figure out how to get there. I think the county, Hennepin County's been just terrific help on leading the way, on trying to figure out this project scope and how to get it done, so give them a lot of credit. And then on the 2nd of July, two nights before the parade, we had the Veterans Dinner out at Braymar, which is run ably by Rick Murphy and some other folks. 200-plus people there, I think, with spouses and significant others. Some guys were there from the Vietnam era that just had a wonderful time. One of our local residents, Greg Moon, invited some of his ROTC friends from 1969 at the University of Minnesota back from Florida and Nevada, and they all marched in the parade, and they really, I think they really enjoyed themselves. So that's it for me. Manager Neal.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I will start with what I guess we call the Burger Matter. The Burger Matter, we've talked a little bit about at the last meeting, and that is that the Burger family has an interest in seeing if the city would be interested in a land exchange that would allow them to do a pretty significant home improvement project that they can't do with the existing locations of lot lines as they, as they stand today. Councilmember Stewart and I have both visited the site, we had a chance to see kind of what's at stake and maybe more importantly, what the challenges, hurdles are. One of the problems we have on, on our end of this discussion is that we really don't have a very well-developed protocol for how we address these kinds of issues, because most of the time, quite frankly, when we have somebody come to us from, from the, from the perspective of staff who wants to get parkland for a private use, we tell them no, we say, we don't do that thing, go away. So most of the time, this never, this never comes to you. And, and that staff behavior, of course, is based on years and years and years of having councils kind of say that to staff, and so staff says that on to, to folks who have those kind of questions. But we do have a proposal before each night that's a little different than what we've seen before, because it's not a purchase of parkland, it's a, it's an exchange of land. So there is a question here, because it is public land, about what kind of process should the council use or the city use to, to make up its mind about how to respond to the Burgers. I think that there ought to be some process. I think it's good for you as elected officials, and frankly, I think it's good for the Burgers too, as they relate to people in their neighborhood and how adjoining property owners understand the, the process that, that has gone down. So a couple suggestions I would make to you is, is we ought to do some kind of notification, we ought to probably have some kind of public hearing at this stage, and you might be well-served also by having the Park Board or the Planning Commission, or the Park Board and the Planning Commission kind of hear this request, take a look at the actual exchange, and make a recommendation back to you, and have a chance for people that have an interest, what not, and I don't mean a property interest, but an interest in how properties around the lake relate to one another, have a chance to express that opinion to you. If, if that is something, if you are interested in sort of playing this all the way out and hearing more about it, we can put that sort of process together and begin, you know, begin to tell the Burgers about what they should expect from a timeline standpoint. We should be able to engage our, our Planning Commission and Park Board. We should also look at who should get notified in that sort of setting. We can do all that if you're interested in hearing more. A very practical and rational position for you to have as elected officials, maybe you've heard enough already and you don't want to do it. And that really is the status quo, and that's what we would, that's how the city would have responded to these kinds of proposals in the past. And I think if that is the position of individual council members, if there's three of you that have that position, then we should probably just come to grips with that and, and accept that that's, we're probably not going anywhere with this proposal. But I think tonight is a night, anyway, that I wanted to get some feedback from you on, on the issue of process.
Member Stewart.
Yeah, I, I think it's good we don't have a protocol for this, because I don't think it's ever happened before, and I don't expect it'll ever happen again. So I think this is a one-off, unique... is a one-off, unique deal. I don't think it'll set precedent. As I said the last time we talked about this, and I'll repeat tonight, I believe that what the Burgers have requested really corrects some very poor line drawing that was done at the time. The house that they currently occupy was divi, and the property that it's on, was divided up from the adjacent properties by a previous owner. And, and they, they drew the line uncomfortably close to the edge of the Burgers' home. So this just gives them a little breathing room. It creates actually a setback that doesn't exist at, at this time. And, and then that setback allows them to do the construction that they're looking to. So I, I think it corrects an error from more than 50 years ago. And, and I don't think it is, I think it's a unique situation. I think it's something that's unique. So I, I think we ought to consider it.
What about, what about the process side of it? What are your thoughts?
I agree with what Manager Neil suggested in terms of a process. I think we should have a public hearing. I think it's appropriate. I think we should hear from the Park Board, since we're talking about park land. I think that's absolutely appropriate.
Good. Thank you. Member Swenson.
I think it should go through Park Board, where the neighbors will have an opportunity to comment, and the Burgers. I think it probably should go through Planning, because we're changing lots, and then come to us for a public hearing. Maybe it won't happen again, maybe it will, maybe they'll get a positive vote, maybe they won't. I'm not going to comment on how I feel about the proposal tonight. But I do think, because it's a swap and it's public land, I think we need the most open process we have. You, for one, Member Stewart, have always wanted the response from the appropriate board or commission. And I think both of those boards and commissions should probably weigh in. But Mr. Staunton is the outgoing chair of Planning, so I'll let him speak about planning.
Member Staunton.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I guess I'm willing to listen more, but I want to hear the full story, and I want to have an open process. I think the Park Board and the Planning Commission makes some sense, and let's understand what it is. Even if this is a one-off, I don't think the process will be one-off. So if, regardless of what the outcome is here, someone else is going to then come forward and say it's like this, and then we'll have to figure out how to deal with that. So we better have a way to do that if we're going to field these kinds of requests. And it does strike me that there's all kinds of situations where lines get drawn, or things get placed, and, and it's awkward, and there might be a solution. So my mind is open to whether there's a solution. Doesn't mean that I'll think that there is, but I'm willing to listen.
Thank you. Member Brindle.
From a process point of view, I, I sort of look like, look at it similar to a subdivision, where we have a, we have a, a public hearing, and, and, and understand the situation fully. And there, there are aspects to this that I want to understand better. And in that, I, I mean, planning will definitely be involved. But I think, I think involving the Park Board, since it involves parkland, makes a lot of sense as well. So that, I mean, makes total sense to me.
Good. All right. I think you've got consensus here.
So I think I'm.
From the council, and, and from me as well. I think, you know, we, we understand the general rule. We all, we all embrace the general rule. We don't usually sell parkland, but like everything else in life, there's exceptions sometimes. And we don't know what's going to happen here, but I think we should have a process that works. And it sounds like the process that's been laid out, that everybody's comfortable with, will work, will serve us well. I don't know if it'll work with your.
I, I don't think, though, that you should assume that five of us think that this is the right process, that you have five yes votes. So I think that's really important, because you asked us if three of us at least were supportive. I'm not telling you I'm supportive of the project or not. I'm telling you what I think the process should be.
Right. All we're talking about is process.
Right, yeah. So couldn't, so you're clear on that.
Got it. So I, what I'm hearing is, we'll, we will schedule an action, not a public hearing at Planning and Park Board, but we'll ask them to review and comment on the proposal. The public hearing will be here. We'll do a notification. We'll use one of our standards for a planning approval notification that captures, you know, the right area, and we'll hold the public hearing here. I don't think the Planning and Park Board actions have to be sequential. I think they could be, they can occur at whatever the next meeting is.
In addition to Planning and Park Board, I think it's important that the staff also comes.
Yes. Yep. We'll do that, too.
All right.
But Planning and Park Board always take comments. So I don't expect them to not take comments from the audience on this. I'm not calling it a public hearing, but they always take comments from their audience.
Okay.
Good. Everybody comfortable with that?
That's what we'll do.
All right. Very good. Anything else for us?
Just a couple of other announcements. The long-term capital improvement presentation that I spoke about early, earlier from the Metropolitan Airports Commission will be held on Wednesday, August 5th. It's important to remember that, that that meeting is a Wednesday, not a Tuesday, because of Night to Unite is Tuesday night. Groundbreaking for the Driving Range project is Tuesday at noon. Hope that, hope you can make it. Talked about, this coming Tuesday, yep, the 14th. There is a Minneapolis Ways and Committee Meeting, Ways, Ways and Means Committee Meeting on July 20th for the Weber, that they will consider the Weber Woods purchase agreement. So we will kind of get a, we'll finally get a sense from their city council what they think will happen with that. And also, to let you know, Councilmember Staunton and I are planning to attend the EEC meeting on Thursday night this week to cover a couple of issues as sort of follow-up, long-term follow-up from the joint meeting the council had with the EEC earlier this year. One of those items is the Partners in Energy Program that we just approved, the Memorandum of Understanding with, with XL Energy. Staff had a meeting with XL staff last week and learned a little bit more about the, about that program, and about what we need to do to be part of it. And so part of that is to establish a, a community committee that, that they will work through, and really is kind of led by the public side, but also includes folks from the business community. And we're, we're going to be taking a look at that with the EEC, and, and how they want to be the, kind of the leaders of that from the, from the city side. But we'll probably be coming back to the council at some point to affirm a, a larger committee that will be part of something that's not called Partners in Energy. We'll rename it, rebrand it, and that's part of what XL wants us to do as well. And that's all I've got.
Okay, good. So the groundbreaking for the Driving Range was Tuesday, the 14th, at noon?
That's right.
All right. Thank you.
Lunch by ten fish.
All right.
And. Eat enough of them, it's lunch.
I wanted to thank both Member Brindle, Member Stewart, for covering for me, for two walks with the mayor this summer. I've got, Member Brindle has already covered, you're covering a future one where I've got a high school reunion.
My 80-day, and a couple of people who just stood with me. I had a couple of people who stood with me at the pavilion, and we chatted a little bit. And I said, you want to walk? And they said, I don't want to walk, it's raining. So we didn't walk.
All right. Well, thank you to both of you for covering for conflict, conflicts that I had. So, all right, anything else? We stand adjourned.